The town of Los Gatos and the Planning Commission in particular strongly encourages active participation on the part of the public in all of its deliberations. There are three different opportunities for the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. The first is when the members of the public submit written communications to the commission that can be incorporated in the staff report prior to a meeting. There are two opportunities that will be provided this evening for the members of the public to address the commission. The first is on any agenda item, agendized item during the public portion of the public hearing, and also when we get to the verbal communication part of the agenda where any member of the public can address the commission on any topic which is not on the agenda. If you would like to address the commission in either of those opportunities this evening, we would ask that you complete a speaker's card which are on the back of the benches in the chambers and give it to the staff as early as possible so that we can invite you up at the appropriate moment in the course of the meeting. We have minutes from two different meetings that were distributed with the packet this evening, both minutes from the meetings of July 24th and August 14th. Are there corrections or additions to the minutes from the meeting of July 24th? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to adopt those minutes. Commissioner Bujohwa.
Move to adopt the minutes of July 24th and August 14th as submitted by staff.
A motion by Commissioner Bujohwa. Do we have a second? Commissioner Smith.
I will second, but I also want to comment that I was absent on August 14th. However, I have reviewed the minutes and the tape, and so I am familiar with everything that went on, and therefore I'm seconding the motion with also my additional comment.
Thank you. So we have a motion in front of us by Commissioner Bujohwa, seconded by Commissioner Smith to adopt the minutes as distributed for the meeting from July 24th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We also have minutes from the meeting of August 14th. Are there additions or corrections to those minutes? Commissioner Talisfor.
No, I will move that we pass those minutes as well. We didn't do it in the last motion.
My motion was for adopting both sets of minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
Sorry. Okay. I stand corrected then.
Thank you. I will. Thank you.
Right. We don't have any written communications this evening. We don't have any requested continuances this evening. Members of the Planning Commission also serve on several town committees. There was a meeting of the Historic Preservation Committee earlier this afternoon, I believe, and Commissioner O'Donnell is going to give his report on that.
At four o'clock today, we met and we considered three different matters on the agenda, which I'll briefly go over with you. The first was for the installation of a new awning on the Newman's Store, which has just opened on 35 West Main. The committee thought the proposed awnings were fine, and so that was recommended and passed. The next one was an old house, a very nice lot, on 16,560 Shannon Road. And the only thing before us was whether the house had any historical significance that would prevent it from being demolished, because it is an old house. It's had many, many iterations of changes to it, many of which did not fit the original house. So after some discussion and the consideration of that, it was recommended that the house indeed could be torn down. And finally, under other business, what I call "new Old Town," that is the portion of Old Town which is across the street from Old Town, wants to change some of their colors. And so today they discussed that with us. It was a little confusing, and some of the colors were not acceptable to the committee, and therefore we've asked them to come back with, one, a change of some of the colors, and, two, a clearer presentation of the colors they propose. And they were quite willing to do that, so they will be back.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Other questions for Commissioner O'Donnell? If not, we'll move now to the portion of the agenda called "verbal communications" where members of the public are invited to address the commission on any item which is not on the agenda this evening. We don't have any speaker cards for anyone who would like to address the commission under verbal communications, but we would invite anyone to come forward who would like to do that. Seeing no one will move forward. There are no items on consent calendar for this evening, so we will move then to the first item on our agenda. That is a continued public hearing from the meeting of the commission on July 10th that's considering architectural site application S-12-094, which is requesting approval to demolish a pre-1941 single-family residence and to construct a new residence at 17263 Wedgewood Avenue on a property which is zoned R-18. May I have a show of hands of commissioners who visited the property? Everyone has. Are there any disclosures by commissioners on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Mosley, may we have a brief staff report?
Yes, good evening. The subject application was considered by the Planning Commission on July 10th, and the applicant was given direction to reduce the bulk and mass of the residence to better integrate the new residence into the existing immediate neighborhood. The applicant has made the following changes to the design. They've decreased the size of the family room and garage and effectively reduced the depth of the residence by seven and a half feet. They've eliminated the two-story volume in the family room and entry, and moved one of the bedrooms to the first floor, which has effectively reduced the second-floor volume by 730 square feet, or 40 percent of what was originally proposed for the second floor. In addition, they reduced the size of the garage by 235 square feet, or 35 percent of what was originally proposed. And the overall height of the residence was reduced from 27 feet 3 inches to 24 feet 8 inches. The revisions were reviewed by the town's consulting architect, and with a handful of detailed changes, which the applicant has incorporated into their plans, the consultant supported the revised design and its suitability with the existing neighborhood. In addition, staff would like to note that we've had communications with the adjacent neighbor at 17251 Wedgewood, and they would like to voice their support of the proposed application. Staff believes the applicant has followed the direction of the Planning Commission and recommends the commission approve the revised application.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Are there questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Smith.
I noticed that Mr. Cannon made some additional recommendations on August 8th, and our plans were submitted on August 20th, our latest revised plans. And can you tell me whether or not they made any of the recommendations? I know they made a substantial change. I'm just wondering whether or not they submitted any of the recommended changes to you.
It was staff's assessment that they corrected all the changes that the consulting architect recommended.
Thank you.
Are there other questions of staff at this time? If not, we will now open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. Leave the applicant, Mr. Cameron Chaffee. We'd ask you to introduce yourself and with your address, please.
Hi, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission. My name is Cameron Chaffee. Address is 17265 Wedgewood Avenue. However, I currently don't live there, and we're planning to build a house to move there. After hearing your concerns in the last meeting, especially the concerns that were raised by Commissioner Bujohwa and Commissioner O'Donnell, we went back to the drawing board and made dramatic changes to address those concerns and bring the house in line with your expectation of the neighborhood and a new building there. And we reduced the square footage by 261 square foot, and we reduced the overall footprint of the house by 332 square foot. And the biggest, or the most dramatic change that we made was to the second floor, which we reduced the footprint of the second floor by 674 square feet, and reduced the height so that the actual volume of the second floor is now 1,685 cubic feet smaller than what it was before by reducing all the open spaces that we had on the second floor. We also decided to, with the new and smaller footprint, we decided to keep the existing house's front wall and the majority of the existing house's floor and driveway. And we also shifted back the front of the house and moved forward the back of the house, reducing the depth by seven feet. Also, I spoke again with neighbors, and as Ms. Mosley told you already, we got a letter of support from Mr. Paul Brown, my neighbor to my left, and also I have the other neighbor at 17291 Wedgewood that's also has supported us and suggested that they would like to even write a letter, but it was too late for this meeting. And in light of all the efforts that we did to address the commission's concern and the support we got from the neighbors and town staff, we request your approval of our submitted plans so we can start building our new home and join the community as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffee. Are there questions of the applicant at this time? If not, thank you very much. We do not have any speaker cards from any members of the public who would like to address the commission. What we would ask, is there anyone here who would like to do that? If not, we would normally give you another three minutes to address the commission, but unless you feel a need to, we'll move forward. You want to go back to the, and be sure you speak into the microphone, please?
There's also, there are three other houses also in the same block, on the same side of the street that were not officially considered as immediate neighbor, but all three of them are two stories, and they have square footage and floor area ratios that are larger than our proposed home. So we even printed out their pictures, and the information, I know that they were not considered immediate neighbor, but I thought if you'd like, I can submit them to support my application.
And we would ask you, Mr. Chaffee, before you leave this evening, could you fill out one of the speaker cards and pass it to the staff? We'll now close the public portion of the public hearing on this agenda item and turn to the commissioner to see if there are questions of staff, comments, or a motion. Commissioner Bujohwa.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank the applicant. It is apparent to me that you took our direction quite seriously, and I am very pleased with the changes. I'm also very happy that you reached out to your neighbors and had conversations with them. So I personally feel that they have substantially taken our comments into account and addressed them, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for approval of architecture and site application S-12098 for 17265 Wedgewood Avenue. And I can make the findings that this project is categorically exempt under Section 15303 of SEQA. I can make the required findings under Section 2910903OE of the town code for demolition of single-family residence as outlined in Exhibit 2. And I do believe I can find that this is substantially in compliance with the residential design guidelines, and I can make the required considerations as required by Section 292150 for granting approval of an architecture and site application, and therefore recommend approval of this application, subject to the conditions outlined in Exhibit 3 of our packet.
So you have a motion for approval of the application in front of us by Commissioner Bujohwa. Do we have a second? Commissioner Talisfor.
I will go ahead and. Thank you. I would like to second that. Can you hear me now? And the comment is, stands with Commissioner Bujohwa. Thank you very much for adhering to what we asked and the residential design guidelines. Appreciate it.
We have a motion for approval of architectural site application S-12094 in front of the commission from Commissioner Bujohwa with a second from Commissioner Talisfor. Are there other comments from the commission? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
There are. Anyone who's not satisfied with the Planning Commission's decision can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There is a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing considering tree removal permit T-13-070, appealing a decision of the Director of Community Development denying a tree removal permit at the residence located at 36 Peralta on property zoned R-18. May I have a show of hands from the commissioners who visited the property? Everyone has. Are there any disclosures by commissioner on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Mosley, may we have a brief staff report?
Yes. The Parks and Public Works Department received a tree removal permit application to remove a 38-inch coast live oak on April 17th of this year. The property owner requested the removal of the oak tree based on structural damage to a detached garage that was believed to be caused by the tree. The tree is reported to be healthy and have good structure. The initial assessment by the arborist for the Parks and Public Works Department was that the tree was causing structural damage. As a result, the tree removal permit was approved. Subsequent to the approval, Parks and Public Works was contacted by a concerned neighbor. The application was reevaluated, and it was determined that there was not enough conclusive evidence that the cracks in the garage floor were caused by the tree roots, and that the information provided was not sufficient to support removal of the tree. As a result, the town rescinded the approval on June 4th. The property owner appealed the decision on June 12th. As is standard for a tree removal appeal, the town's consulting arborist conducted a site visit and a concluding report. The arborist came to the same conclusion as staff that it was unclear that the tree was the sole cause of the garage, damage to the garage, and recommended that a portion of the garage floor nearest the tree be removed in order to further assess the situation. The applicant followed that direction, and the consulting arborist completed a second site visit. The arborist was able to conclude after this second visit that the roots of the tree have been causing damage to the garage floor and walls. The report provided several options or recommendations that included removal of the tree and several options for retention of the tree with or without reconstruction of the garage. While there appear to be several alternatives available to save the tree, the town cannot require that the owner do any of the options. The Planning Commission's discretion tonight is limited to granting or denying the appeal. Based on the additional information obtained during the appeal process that was not available to staff during the permit consideration, there is sufficient evidence that the tree roots are damaging the existing garage. The town has historically granted tree removal permits if it has been found that the tree is damaging private property, and as a result, staff recommends granting the appeal. Staff is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Are there questions for the staff at this time? If not, we will now open the public portion of the public hearing and invite the applicant to address the commission, and I believe Cynthia Mertens will be representing the applicant. We'd ask that you introduce yourself with your address.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Mertens. My address is 1191 Randall Avenue in San Jose, California. And I'm here representing Jack and Marnie Biletto. The staff report is very complete. I don't need to add very much to that. The only thing I will add is that the tree removal permit was granted in May, and it was based on the town arborist's findings that the tree was actually damaging the structure of the garage. After that, and we do have a letter that was sent by, I believe it was Sandy and Gil Decker and the Glen Ridge Neighborhood Association that makes two unsupported, in my opinion anyway, rather disrespectful accusations stating that the PPW sent out the town arborist who has no expertise on building structures to make a determination whether or not the tree is endangering the structure. And the letter goes on to say that the decision to cut a perfectly healthy, historically significant heritage oak to the ground on the "assumption" of an arborist with no expertise in building structures is a travesty. I'd just like to point out that we have four arborists, four arborists, who have all recommended that this tree is causing structural damage to the concrete in the garage. After this tree permit was rescinded, which I'm sure doesn't happen all that often, but after it was rescinded and was recommended that perhaps the trees were not, the tree was not causing the damage, the Biletto's hired someone to actually take up part of the concrete in their garage, which exposed the roots, and I believe I saw an indication that the council members have actually seen that. I don't think there's much doubt that this tree is causing the damage to the garage. After that, another arborist, Deborah Ellis, who is a master, a certified master arborist, which is, as I understand, at the highest level of certification that one can obtain, came to the conclusion as well that the tree was causing the structural damage to the garage. So based on that and on the code, the town ordinance, which says that tree removal is permitted if the tree is causing structural damage to a building, we ask that the appeal be granted and that the permit be issued, allowing the Biletto's to take down this tree, which is completely on their property and is in their backyard, as you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mertens. Are there questions for the applicant's representative? If not, Commissioner Bujohwa.
I'm wondering if you could comment on some of the alternatives that were proposed for retention of the tree and from the applicant's perspective of whether or not those are reasonable, desirable? Why weren't those pursued?
Well, one of the suggestions that one of the arborists made is that the garage could be moved, but that that would cause additional problems because variances would be needed, exceptions would have to be made, and it would probably not be, or the fact was stated, that it would not be consistent with the architecture of the neighborhood if that were required. These other things, chopping the roots, putting something over the roots, the arborist commented that it would make the tree unstable, and that they couldn't guarantee that the tree would actually survive, that it may damage the tree to such an extent that it too would eventually die and have to be removed anyway. There were other types of things suggested, but most of them are very, very expensive, and we're not sure that it would either save the tree or prevent further damage to the garage.
Thank you for that. If I could follow up, how, over what period of time did this damage take place? Was this a very rapid event? Was this, I mean, has this garage, the garage looked, from appearances, it matches the architecture of the house. It looks relatively new, so I'm not sure how old the garage is and how long it took for this damage to occur.
It's my, somebody told me that the garage was permitted many years ago, maybe 50 or 60 years ago, I'm not sure. But I don't know how quickly the damage has occurred. I just have no answer to that. I'm not an arborist.
So it's a 50 or 60-year-old garage, and to your knowledge, is this the first time that they've had an issue with the foundation?
I honestly don't know. I think it's the first time the Biletto's have had an issue.
And how long have they been in the home?
A year or two? Four years, three or four years.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Yeah, I'm just curious. You're here on their behalf. Are you representing them legally or friend or?
Well, I'm.
You're not an arborist. I'd just like some clarification.
I am an attorney, and I have known the Biletto's for many, many years, and they asked me to appear on their behalf.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you.
Are there other questions for the applicant's representative? If not, thank you very much. We'll now provide an opportunity for those members of the public who would also like to address the commission on this issue. We have two speaker cards if there are other people other than those two people who have, would like to address the commission. We'd ask you to come forward and give a speaker's card to the staff at this point in time. We'll call the first member of the public, Gilbert Decker.
Thank you very much. I'd like to commend the commission. You folks worked damn hard on your own time, and the town would be a mess without you. Having said that, in my brief time, I live at 45 Glen Ridge, and my house backs up to the Peralta house. You'll hear from my wife a lot of detail about that tree. It's been there for years. If you look at the situation where the people broke up the concrete to look, I just can't believe that suddenly in the last two years that damage has been caused by that tree. You're going to see the evidence the tree is about 100 years old. We'll call the first member of the public, Gilbert Decker.
Thank you very much. I'd like to commend the commission. You folks worked damn hard on your own time, and the town would be a mess without you. Having said that, in my brief time, I live at 45 Glen Ridge, and my house backs up to the Peralta House. You'll hear from my wife a lot of detail about that tree. It's been there for years. If you look at the situation where the people broke up the concrete to look, I just can't believe that suddenly in the last two years that damage has been caused by that tree. You're going to see that evidence the tree is about 100 years old and very healthy. And with the tree ordinances we have in town, we work hard to save the trees. I know a number of people who have worked very hard in their house. We did that in an original house we had on Belmont Avenue. To save a tree, we went to great, not expense, but efforts to make sure that when we redid the house, we didn't screw up the tree, and we were able to do that. And I think some of these alternatives that saved the tree should be the serious matter tonight, and thank you for your time.
Are there questions for Mr. Decker? Thank you very much. Mark Wainwright.
Good evening. I'm Mark Wainwright. I live at 32 Peralta Avenue, where I've been living with my family since 1982. When we moved into the house 31 years ago, and adjacent to our backyard, was a very large tree. And over the course of time, the tree's become a little bit larger until recently. There has been, just as in any neighborhood where there are large trees, there's been the requirement to trim the tree over time. We've made a contribution to help trim it because some of the large limbs hung over our backyard. I went downtown and went to 1951 and pulled the application for a building permit, and the application in 1951 was for either a carport or garage. The building permit allows a carport. Clearly, over time, there have been some modifications to the building to turn it into a garage, but I think a basic premise is that it's actually not a permitted structure there, based on what's in the record at the town. I'd also like to address the general notion of equity. I was involved in a project in the neighborhood, and we were required by the town to go to great lengths to protect the trees during the course of the project. That included putting up special fencing, making sure that there was no damage to the roots of the oak trees, and there's a small redwood tree. And I think in a basic sense of fairness, to allow the removal of a tree that has been there for many, many decades because it possibly could be causing damage to an unreinforced slab is inappropriate. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wainwright. Are there questions for Mr. Wainwright? Commissioner Sayak.
The research that you found on the permit that was issued, is that something that the staff has available?
I don't know. I made several copies of it, so.
And I'll save my questions for staff, but if you don't mind just handing them a copy, and then during questions and answers of staff, I'll ask about the...
Sure. Thank you.
We'll call Sandy Decker.
My name is Sandy Decker, and I reside at 45 Glen Ridge.
Good evening, planning commissioners. This is the tree in question in 1945. It's situated, as it is today, directly behind our house and visible throughout the Glen Ridge area. As you can see, the tree is mature in 1945, which would make it 68 years old when this picture was taken. There's no evidence of the garage in question. That tree was there and thriving 76 years before the reinforced unreinforced slab of concrete in question was poured for a makeshift carport. That tree's been standing within this community for well over 100 years. This tree is rated by the arborist as an 85 out of 100 on a condition preservation and suitability rating. Four out of five of the recommendations are to keep the tree and modify the structure. The most logical would be the fourth option to the staff report, which states, quote, "Keep the oak tree. Carefully demolish the existing garage in order to protect the oak roots. Elevate the garage floor over the roots, which could be done easily now that the tree has been severely cut by the applicant." This solution would also solve the existing drainage problem created because the garage is well below street level. There would be no need to move the structure on the lot. As I stated in my letter to you, this tree could be destroyed because of a policy that expects our arborists to choose between their urban forest expertise and making structural decisions they are not qualified to do. I am told PPW permit process has been changed due to this tree removal application, and a structural expert will be required before a determination like this can occur again. However, please don't let this tree be sacrificed in the interim. While we debate this issue tonight, thousands of trees are dying in ongoing fires, both rural and urban in California. These trees are air purifying gathering places for complete and thriving ecosystems. How can you allow this tree to die when this is ordinance, when there is ordinance language in our town code and general plan to protect this lofty giant? Please weigh your options. Thank you.
Are there questions for Ms. Decker? If not, thank you, ma'am. We would now give the applicant or the applicant's representative an additional three minutes to address the commission.
Thank you. I just want to state that the Biletto's certainly respect the town ordinance. They certainly want to live in a city in which there are beautiful trees. Los Gatos is known for its beauty, and they have no intention whatsoever of doing something that is going to hinder that. However, their structure is becoming structurally unsound because of this tree, and the alternatives that have been proposed are economically disastrous when you think about it. And the fact that this tree has been there for a certain period of time is not the determining factor, obviously, and the fact that how long has this damage occurred again is, or over what period of time, is not a determining factor. The important thing to realize is that the code does permit the tree, a tree removal permit to be issued if, in fact, a tree is causing structural damage. Four arborists have come to that conclusion. Thank you.
Are there questions for Ms. Mertens? If not, we will close the public portion of the public hearing and turn to the commission for either questions of staff or comments. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Correct.
Commissioner Sayak.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions of staff. The first, there's a statement in the staff report on page two at the bottom. It should be noted that subsequent to the denial of the tree removal permit, the applicant trimmed the tree, altering the tree aesthetically and structurally. Just wanted some clarification on that, whether the arborist reports, were those, were the inspections done after the trimming of the tree? And when you say that it affects the tree structurally, is that something that the arborist had looked at?
I believe the trimming had occurred prior to the consulting arborist. The consulting arborist is here if you would like to address that question to her. Ms. Debbie Ellis is available if you have questions in regards to that, though.
Okay. And then, should I ask the question of her now, or should I continue with staff questions?
I'd just, I'd say it now.
Okay. Yes, please.
For the record, please introduce yourself.
I'm Debbie Ellis. I'm the consulting arborist for the town of Los Gatos, and I live at 12824 Saratoga Glen Court in Saratoga.
Thank you. Your report to us was very comprehensive. Thank you. What I wanted clarification from staff was the statement that the tree trimming altered the tree aesthetically and structurally. I understand the aesthetically part. The structurally part, could you just comment on that? Structurally, does it affect the decision on whether or not the tree's growth, girth has any impact on the garage now that it's been trimmed?
I don't think that I saw the trimming.
Okay.
Somebody might want to clarify when the trimming was done, but I believe that my last site visit, and I can tell you when that was, July 16th was my last site visit. That's when I entered the garage and looked at the pavement that had been removed. And I think that Marnie had mentioned to me that the tree was, had been pruned after that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. If I could just get that clarification now.
Staff was informed of this from the neighbor, Sandy Decker. I do not have a specific date as to when this occurred, though.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
As I understand it, there's some question as to the expertise of an arborist to testify as to the effect of roots and/or the tree on structures. In your, you've been practicing for a number of years, have you?
Almost 30.
Okay. And during the course of that practice, have you from time to time had a comment on the effect of roots on buildings or structures?
Many times.
And is that something that you learn as an arborist?
To a point.
And what point?
Well, if I can see that a root has contacted a piece of pavement like a foundation and the pavement is cracked at that point, then it's logical to presume that the root probably caused that damage.
In this particular matter, there was a L-shaped piece of concrete taken out, was there?
Right.
And when you looked at the hole remaining, you could see the roots of the tree?
Yes.
And based on that, you drew the conclusion that those roots were causing the crack in the concrete immediately above it?
Yes, there was one particularly large buttress root that can be seen on the outside of the garage that enters beneath the slab, and it is quite large as it enters from the garage. You can look at this root. It's about eight inches in diameter.
Did you also observe that the trunk of the tree was impinging on the side of the garage?
Well, I call it more the root collar of the tree, which is where the buttress roots flare from the trunk of the tree, and that part was contacting the slab.
There's some, I thought it was your report, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. One of the arborists said that that expansion of, what do you call it? The root what? I call it the trunk.
People call it different things. One of the things it's called is the root flare or the buttress, buttress flare.
I don't know whether you said this, so I'm really asking you. The root flare in one of the reports was pushing in on the wall of the garage so that there was some deformation in that. Was that your testimony?
I have to go back and read the complete report, but one thing I did note that was that the window in the garage was not square. Whether or not that's caused by the root, I don't know. All I can say that seems to be logically caused by roots of that tree is the large buttress root that's entering underneath the slab.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talasfor.
Right. So that large buttress root, as you mentioned just now, you mentioned in the report that will not be cut, but instead it could be retained and protected with either steel plates or PVC pipe. So, and how would that help the situation? Can you explain that to us?
Because then after that, structures can be built upon it. This is one of the things that the city of Sunnyvale does when they rebuild sidewalks. This is a technique that I believe is reserved mostly for extraordinary situations, not typically used in a situation like this, but I was asked to provide options. So I can provide options, and whether or not they turn out to be feasible is another matter.
Exactly. And then you also use the word throughout your report of that the roots could have caused this. So you're not, are you, like, if you were going to present, you know, give me a percentage that this is exactly what caused the cracks, would it be 1% or up to 100? What would you say of the percentage that this tree, you're sure or maybe not or? Because in the report, I read a lot of could's, maybe, it's contributing along with the deterioration of the cement. It's not, it's not apparent to me that the only cause here are the roots after I read your report.
Are you reading my first or my second report?
Well, I think it's both of them.
Okay.
Well, without rereading my entire second report, I can say with reasonable certainty that it appears that that large buttress root that is entering beneath the slab is causing damage to that slab.
So, but that it could be, there's an option for minimizing that with what you just described with this steel plate?
That's not going to minimize damage to what is there, but if something else is rebuilt, that's a way to preserve the roots while building something like a foundation on top of them. And it comes with compromises because when you do that, you have a thinner section of foundation at that point, which is a weak junction in the slab. But that is something that is done sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
One of the questions I had in reading an additional arborist's report is that his estimation was that this tree grew two feet per year, and so he calculated an age of it. But my question is, this remedial action that sometimes is used in extraordinary situations, how does it account for continuing growth? Because I'm assuming, or maybe I don't want to assume, I'm going to ask you, has this, is this tree going to continue to grow?
Yes.
And so therefore, whatever remedial action is taken would have to assume or calculate out how many more roots there would be under that garage and where they would go. Is that correct?
That would be difficult to do. If you're using methods like that, you would be able to deal with some of the roots, you would not be able to deal with all of the roots.
And so the question that I have is that these are the roots we see today, but there could be additional roots growing under this structure, no matter where the, the tree is going to go where it's going to go, no matter where that structure, or...
I think it's highly likely that there are many additional roots under the concrete slab.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Bujua.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ellis. So everything, oh, I'm still, still asking questions. So everything has a lifespan. A tree has a lifespan, a concrete slab has a lifespan. So I'm trying to understand, from your experience, how rapid of an event is this? Is, I mean, apparently this slab has been there for 40 or 50 years possibly, and if a new slab is poured, is it going to be another 40 or 50 years before we see the same sort of damage? Or is the root in a position where it's going to reoccur in a year? I mean, that's, that'll help me make my decision. I mean, I don't know if you can answer that, but is this a slow-moving train wreck, or is this, you know?
Well, I can give you a couple of scenarios, and some of them are borne out by some research, not all of which I can quote to you right now, but some experiments have been done looking at how long it takes trees to cause additional root damage after techniques have been employed to stop or reduce the damage they are causing. And there's been quite a bit of research that's been done on sidewalk repair because that's something that oftentimes has to be done frequently, and roots are cut close to the trunk oftentimes when sidewalk repair happens. And a very commonly quoted number of years that I hear is generally about seven. So that's one scenario, looking at sidewalk repair. Now, with tree root damage, oftentimes a tree will put on a growth spurt and can cause quite a bit of damage in a very short amount of time, even one or two growing seasons. So I guess the answer is it all depends. If it's a healthy tree, if it has access to resources and it's able to grow, then it will. then it will, and it will put on growth in the roots as well, diameter growth. So, my, my hunch is that in this situation, if procedures are undertaken to try and slow the damage, they probably will for a time, but it's likely that they are going to recur. There's, there's very little that can be done, short of removing the tree or moving the garage far away from the tree, or building a new garage on a foundation that's above the roots, that's going to stop damage from the roots of the tree.
Other questions for Ms. Ellis? If not, thank you very much. Are there other questions of staff? Commissioner Sayak.
Thank you, Chair. The question that I had was with regard to the permit that Mr. Wainwright had presented. Is that a pertinent fact, the fact that it's, it was permitted for a carport versus a garage?
Permits back in the 50s were a bit different than what you see today. The permit is a little unclear. It does talk in one portion about a carport or garage, and in another part as a carport, where the property owner was signing. So, it's unclear whether it was entirely a garage or whether it was a carport. It was the same permit for either structure at that time.
Before, before we go further, I think staff wants to provide some clarification about some of the testimony that we heard from the public. Is that right?
I think there was two questions that were posed by the commission.
Do I get you to talk directly into the mic? Yeah.
There were two questions posed by the commission. One was the trimming of the tree. Exhibit five is my letter rescinding the permit, and that was dated June 4th, 2013. And to my recollection, that the tree trimming was done after the fact, after this letter was sent to the homeowner. The other question, clarification point, was have we modified the ordinance? And we have not.
Are there other questions of the staff? Commissioner Smith.
If I could just ask the question about the options available to the homeowner in terms of the standard of review. As I, I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. Even if the, even if the tree, if the homeowner attempted to build something else and, and protected the tree however they could, the fact is that the, the site plan at this time would not allow them to move that garage far enough away from the tree to prevent further damage. Did I understand that correctly in the staff report?
Yes, I'd like to reiterate that staff doesn't have an accurate existing site plan of the property, but in staff's assessment of the property as it currently stands, the house starts to, it steps closer to the property line as you get further away from the garage. And the garage itself is only probably about three, maybe, maybe at most five feet away from the house as it currently is situated at the back of the house. And so, moving it forward, you're going, and move it, because it's only about a foot away from the side property line, so you're either going to be looking at exceptions and variances and building code issues in moving it forward, because it would be too close to the house.
Oh, thank you.
Other questions of staff? Comments? Commissioner O'Donnell.
As I've understood the testimony this evening, people would love to save that tree. However, as I analyze, what we have the responsibility to do is either grant the appeal or deny the appeal. And the only testimony we have from credible witnesses, that is to say, in this case, experts, is that there is no question but that the roots are causing the damage. Now, even if you believe that certain things could be done that might defer further damage, that is not in our purview. So, it seems to me, we either have to find evidence that the recommendation of the staff is not supported by the evidence, or it is. And if it is supported by the evidence, and I've heard no evidence to the contrary, we would have to grant the appeal. So, I may be misanalyzing that, but I thought I would throw it out, so anybody that wants to could help us think about it.
Commissioner Bujhwa.
I'll make a comment to that point. I, you know, as we look toward the standards, the required standards of review for a tree removal application, there's six, there's six items. And the first one is that proximity and structural damage to a building, and I think it's pretty logical to assume that, that this tree is causing the damage. But if you look to number two, item number two, and this is exhibit two, this is in section 29100990, the town code, says, "Condition giving rise to the permanent application cannot be reduced to a less than significant level by reasonable application of preservation preventative measures," blah, blah, blah. And I think, to me, that's where it comes in. What is reasonable application of preservation? And I would, I would think that, given all of the language in our town code about how we value this sort of resource in LaScada, given the prominence of that tree in that neighborhood, I mean, these, that neighborhood in particular, and those around it, are dominated by mature trees. It's part of a character of the neighborhood. I think the definition of reasonable needs to be proportionate to the tree. So, you know, what we may do for a 12-inch diameter oak tree and would consider reasonable may not be the same for a tree of this significance. And so, I would think that I would have trouble making, granting the appeal, because I'm not sure I can say that there is not a reasonable application that can be attempted to preserve the tree. So, that would be my comment.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I think that's a very good point. My only problem is there's no evidence in the record to suggest what that reasonable alternative or methodology would be, and therefore, what you have before you to make a decision basically would be what's in the record. I think it's very nice to wish or to hope, but I find nothing in the record that says there's anything they can do besides our guessing. And we have no, no cost data. The evidence we've heard on moving the garage, sounds like it's pretty infeasible. So, if the measure we must have for every case that comes before us when a house is being damaged, or a garage is being damaged, is to make a proportional judgment as to the size of the tree versus the cost of its remediation, there's nothing in the record, nor were any questions asked about that. So, the record, it seems to me, if you, if you base your decision on this record, there's nothing there. So, thank you.
Commissioner Talasfor.
Well, I'm going to attempt this. I, I'm still not convinced that the roots are the only cause of this situation. And I also believe that I heard the, the arborist say that the roots are contributing to the damage. Also contributing to the damage is the concrete that's been there for 60 years. It's unsupported, there's no rebar in it. There are options that were presented. We're not talking about a scrub oak here, we're talking about a heritage oak that's probably approaching 100 years old. I, for one, I mean, I, there are options there. I don't know how much it costs, but it's not cheap to cut a tree down either. And we have made many approvals up here for houses, for additions to houses, and we've taken great care with the trees that are around them. We have, I can remember that one house on Bayview that we had, we said, "No, you can't remove that house," I mean, that tree. You have to build your wing around the tree, and they did. And then I remember we moved a house out of the, visibly in the hillsides to protect a grove of blue oaks. I don't know. I think that there's a compromise here. I just don't think that it's been explored. I don't know what the answer is, but I don't think it's cutting the tree down. I don't think we just go from black to white that easily, not this tree, not in that neighborhood. It's the ambiance and character of our town. That's what we have to try to, to work around. That maybe is what we need to talk about. That's all I'm going to say right now.
Commissioner Smith.
Well, I'll jump right in here and say that personally, I love trees like I see and saw, and I've been known at times to sit under a tree like that and talk to it. So, that's how much I love those kind of trees. However, when I look at this situation, and I think that there's also, when we heard from the arborist, the trunk flare, the trunk flare is also touching the side, the outside side of the wall. So, we aren't just talking about cracks in concrete, we're talking about the fact that the trunk base is now leaning into the structure. So, I, I personally am, I'm struggling with the idea of taking a beautiful tree like this and cutting it down, but at the same time, I'm, I'm thinking about the standards of review and the fact that we are asking a homeowner to not only take remedial action to save this tree, but in fact, they will not be able to place their garage close to this tree in any case, and they're going to end up possibly without a garage as they try to save the tree, and where else would they put their garage? So, I think it's, I think it's more than just saving a beautiful tree like this. I wish we could take these trees and replant them someplace, but that's not possible. So, I'm, I'm still struggling with my decision, but I am just as aware of the trunk base, and that's what I wanted to make a comment on, that the trunk base is leaning into the side of the garage as well as the roots under the garage floor.
Commissioner Talasfor.
Well, in response to that, because I looked at that as well, and although it hadn't come up and it wasn't an option, I would imagine, let's see, that there could be some creative solution to that challenge as well, of the tree growing into the back of the garage, if that should happen in the next many years. You could cut an alcove in. I mean, there's lots of things I think you could do. I guess what I'm saying is, options have been presented, and yet, they haven't been explored to support, to support any support of this appeal for me. I haven't seen any sincere effort in, you know, another way to look at this situation. So, I could not support this appeal.
All right, I'll see where we are. I concur with Commissioner O'Donnell's comments that we don't, we don't have costs on, on some of these. I mean, we've heard it's going to be infeasible, we've heard it's, but we don't have something to compare, so we don't know how reasonable an application of preservation would be. The only thing I've heard about moving the garage is the fact that it might need some exceptions to setbacks. We've granted exceptions to setbacks for much less than, than a tree of this significance. So, I don't see that. I mean, I think if it came before us and they wanted to move the garage two feet to save this tree, I don't think this commission, any one of us would, would, would not support that. So, I'm going to move to deny the appeal based on the fact that I can't make the finding under section 29100990, that we have been, we have been given enough evidence to understand whether or not there is a reasonable application of preservation for the options that have been presented in, in the various arborist reports we've been given.
Motion introduced by Commissioner Bujhwa, Commissioner Talasfor.
And I will support that.
There's a second to the motion.
Thank you.
By Commissioner Talasfor. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes four to three with Commissioners O'Donnell, Smith, and Erickson opposed. Are there appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paulson. We're going to take about a five-minute break, real quick, to let the staff do some adjustments and so forth, and give the commission a break, and we will reconvene in about five minutes. and so forth and give the commission a break, and we will reconvene in about five minutes. Planning Commission of the town of Los Gatos. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing which is considering zoning code amendment application A-13-01, which is considering adoption of amendments to the zoning regulations contained in chapter 29 of the town code. The commission will be considering the following items and making a recommendation to Town Council with regard to the following items. One, designating a zoning district or districts where retail sales of firearms and ammunition is permitted with the approval of a conditional use permit. Second, establishing regulations for a conditional use permit for retail sales of firearms, ammunition, and explosives. Three, prohibiting the sale of firearms and ammunition for home occupation permits. And fourth, incorporating existing town policies regarding home occupation permits and duties of the Planning Commission and duties of the Town Council. Are there any disclosures by a commissioner for this item? Seeing none, Ms. Bailey, may we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Erickson, and members of the commission. At the Town Council meeting of March 4th, 2013, Town Council adopted an urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the opening of any new business engaged in the retail sales of firearms, ammunition, and/or explosive devices within the town of Los Gatos. And to summarize those uses, I'm just going to refer to them as firearms from your presentation. The council extended that moratorium on April 15th, and the moratorium is still in effect until February 20th, 2014. The mayor appointed two council members to an ad hoc subcommittee to work with staff on the language for an ordinance to establish a regulatory business permit process for firearm sellers in the town of Los Gatos, which was adopted by the Town Council on August 5th, 2013. In addition, the council ad hoc subcommittee was also directed to work with town staff to develop zoning and land use regulations for firearm sellers. The report you have before you tonight contains the recommendations made by the committee. The intent of the proposed ordinance and what is before you tonight for consideration are as follows, and I hope you can read that. Designating a zoning district where retail sales of firearms is permitted with the approval of a conditional use permit. Establishing regulations for a conditional use permit for retail sales of firearms. Prohibiting the sales of firearms for home occupation permits. And incorporating existing town policies regarding home occupation permits and the duties and responsibilities of the Planning Commission and the Town Council. In regards to zoning districts, prior to the adoption of the moratorium, retail firearm sales were permitted in four commercial zones, which allowed retail sales. The council ad hoc subcommittee reviewed each of these zones and one other zone. Of the five zones reviewed, the committee first determined that the LM and the CM zones were the best zones to allow the use, since each encompassed an industrial area which would have a minimal impact to residential neighborhoods. The committee then analyzed LM and CM zone parcels that were located outside of a 500 and a 250-foot buffer radius of sensitive uses. And these sensitive uses included schools, educational facilities, public parks and trails, government buildings, religious institutions, and existing youth-oriented facilities. And youth-oriented facilities are places like a dance or karate studio. In addition, the committee considered the locations of the safe route to schools. Because no parcels in the CM zone were outside either of the buffer radiuses, the committee eliminated the CM zone as a possible location and recommends that the use be permitted only in the LM zone with approval of a conditional use permit. In the LM zone, no parcels were outside the 500-foot buffer radius. Therefore, the committee recommends the 250-foot buffer radius. On the slide, which is attachment four in your report, illustrates the recommended buffer area and what parcels are eligible to apply for a conditional use permit for retail firearm sales. The areas that are in the brown hatched areas here are the 250-foot radiuses from the sensitive uses. The buildings that have like a little flag on top of it are schools. And the places that have boxes, those are the youth-oriented facilities. Based on the recommended language in your report detailing the method used to measure distances from building walls of a potential retail space, additional retail spaces and other parcels not shown on this map may be available for retail firearm sales. In regards to home occupations, pursuant to Town Council direction, the sales of firearms is proposed to be a prohibited home occupation use. Since prohibited home occupation uses are proposed to be added in the zoning ordinance, staff is taking this opportunity to incorporate additional prohibited uses, which are currently prohibited pursuant to a planning department policy which became effective in 1996. These uses are income tax preparers, medical offices and uses, real estate office and uses, and those are excluding a use which is specifically required to have a mailing address for that business and where the real estate transactions aren't occurring at that site. And the other use is for contractors and contracting services, and that is where crews don't show up at a contractor's home and they all then take off to go to the job site. And it also includes where contractors can't store their construction materials, which is above and beyond what a normal homeowner would have at their house. In case you're wondering why the town prohibits income tax preparers and real estate offices as a home occupation, that is because the regulations for home occupation permits is only one customer allowed at the site at one time. And for real estate offices and income tax preparers, most often there's a couple that shows up. So that is why those two uses are prohibited. In regards to firearm land use regulations, I'm not going to go into the specific details, but to summarize the regulations described in your report, there are findings for denial, there's considerations, conditions of approval, operating standards, and noticing requirements which are recommended to be part of the conditional use permit process. In addition, there are changes proposed to the duties of the Planning Commission and Town Council regarding conditional use permits for retail firearm sales and to incorporate current requirements for establishments selling alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption. Lastly, I'm going to talk about existing uses. If the seller, excuse me, if the proposed zoning ordinance amendments are adopted, any existing retail seller of firearms that was legally operating as of the effective date of this ordinance would become a non-conforming use. Currently, town code permits non-conforming, non-residential uses in the downtown area to continue in perpetuity if the use became non-conforming due to zone changes and ordinance amendments which occurred after July 1st, 1982. Town code requires other uses to cease after a specific duration if they cannot come into conformance with the current zoning requirements. The council ad hoc subcommittee is proposing three alternatives regarding the time limits for non-conforming uses. Time limits for non-conforming uses is a land use matter as it is part of the zoning ordinance. The determination as to which option, option will ultimately be adopted is a policy decision which will be made by the Town Council. These options are: status quo, not making any changes; requiring a specific time period; or requiring 60 days, which is currently required for uses located outside of the downtown area. I want to point out there is an exception to that 60-day requirement in that recently most of the town code ordinances that have been adopted to regulate uses such as new office buildings and formula retails, those were specifically exempted from, the existing uses were exempted from having to become conforming. So they were like grandfathered in. So I'm going to go back to slide one, because I want to reiterate that these are the issues that are to be considered tonight and the recommendations that will be forwarded to Town Council. And staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Questions for staff? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Two questions. One on the map, which is exhibit four. I'm just, I was a little confused by the Sessors parcel 52910-023 directly across the street appears from the Templar location. Is that, that appears to be the red, which I find odd, for a permitted parcel. Is it intended to be a permitted parcel?
The red parcels are, were the permitted uses.
So Templar is across the street, and that's going to be a non-conforming use, but were to move across the street, it would be a conforming use?
So this hearing is about zoning and generally for the town and not any specific uses?
What I'm curious about is the other two parcels you picked are, you can see why you picked them. Do you, can you tell me why APN 52910-023 was selected?
It's outside of the buffer radius.
It's the only parcel in that area that's outside?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's in the LM zone.
Okay. And then the other question is, if I understand you correctly, we are not to get into the question of amortization of a use this evening? I.e., if it's a non-conforming use, you said there are three choices, one of which is 60 days, but we're not getting into that? That's the Town Council?
The Town Council will be the ultimate deciding body, but if you have comments or recommendations regarding that, yes, please include those and we can forward those to Town Council.
Well, your list on the wall did not include that. I mean, I'm not anxious to get into an area that I don't have to get into. So I guess I'm really asking you, is that an area you want us to get into?
That is your option. The items that were presented before you, those are the specific recommendations made by the committee that you can address. There's several options, and you don't need to get into the discussion of the actual options for amortizations, but you can certainly discuss it and forward any comments if you have a preference.
Okay, then I have one final question. The three options you gave us, one of which is 60 days, has the Town Attorney expressed an opinion on the ability to revoke a use permit in 60 days?
Currently, there are a variety of schemes for amortization in the existing code. So the subcommittee has looked at all of those. And again, for the, ranging from uses that last interminably, that they are non-conforming forever, as Ms. Bailey indicated, some uses in town have been extended for 20 years period, several of those this commission has seen in recent years, and some as short as 60 days. I don't believe that planning staff has been able to identify where the short period of time has ever been applied in recent, in the recent years.
So that's a theoretical possibility as far as the town is concerned, but you've never applied it?
Town staff has not been aware of any use for the 60-day requirement.
Commissioner Seawright?
I have a couple of questions, but I'll stick with existing uses. Could you provide some background that the ad hoc committee may have discussed when presenting these three options? Pros and cons for each? Was it just, just a list that they wanted the, the Planning Commission and then the council to further consider?
That's correct.
And Ms. Bailey had mentioned that there is no formula that I guess we have been using as to which use would be receiving within, within which, so is it really case-specific?
No, there's actual, the code that you have in front of you, if you look at the code section, it clearly describes which uses, if it's in the downtown area, it is non-conforming without end. If it's in certain other sections, there's been a 20-year period applied. And then it gives examples, in theory, about when a 60-day period would apply.
Okay, so here's it, if I may. Could you specify, is this area, this is not part of the downtown, is that correct? What is our official definition of the downtown area?
There's a downtown area and there's a central business district. The downtown area goes to Blossom Hill Road.
Okay. Okay. And if I may, what on existing uses? There's also a section of zoning ordinance requires non-conforming uses that are annexed to the town. My question is specific to residential homes that are annexed into the town that have, that sell guns from the home. Because it's a prohibited use, would that also have 20 years to conform, or would that automatically have to cease because it's a prohibited use?
Well, there's nothing that's been adopted yet, but we do have a proposal to regulate
But given the language that we have here, could you clarify how that's? I just need further clarification on residential uses. Because, because a residential use is specifically prohibited in what's drafted here, if a home is annexed in, would that use have to cease? Or would that use have 20 years to, to conform?
Well, again, it depends how we write up the ordinance, but right now it would be 20 years.
20 years, okay. And then if I may, more process questions? Looking at the map, so there's three sites that we've identified. Have those, have the owners of those three sites been notified that the zoning could change on their lots? And then the follow-up to that, have we given notification to the surrounding addresses as we normally do with parcels that there's a potential change onto these three sites?
First of all, the zoning is not changing on those three parcels. It's just the permitted uses are changing.
Okay.
And it is a townwide ordinance, so it, we don't send out public notification to the businesses, but it was advertised in the newspaper, and we did outreach on the What's New website regarding this matter.
If I may, and I'll bring this up more during, when we have our deliberations, my only concern with that townwide policy is having learned lessons from the affordable housing process that we've did, where we've identified sites that may have a change. What I've learned from that process is that those parcels and those residences surrounding those parcels have lots to say about changes in use. And so it'd be And so it'd be my concern that there was no targeted notification specifically since it's only three sites within the town. But I'll, I'll share that more with, during deliberations.
Thank you, Commissioner Sayok. Commissioner Bouchard.
Thank you, Chair Erickson. Most of my questions have been asked and answered, but there's one that I still am not quite clear on. So the map that we have, out of all the town, we've narrowed it down to three parcels where this would be a permitted use. That's the way I read that map. But there's a sentence that says additional retail spaces on other parcels not shown on the map may be available for retail firearm sales. That's on page four of the staff report. So we had a very specific map and then we have this very nebulous statement that there may be other parcels out there. So that confused me. So if you could maybe explain that to me, that's under permitted uses subsection B.
The definition of how it's measured, it's measured from wall areas. So if there is a business on an adjacent parcel where the, this shows, the map shows for entire parcels, but there could be a parcel where there's a building that has multi-tenants. And so if you measure from where the walls are of those businesses on that property, then, then it could potentially extend onto another parcel.
So some of these parcels where that, that setback line bisects the parcel or just, just touches the corner of it. There may be, so we're not talking about parcels that aren't on that map. It's still going to be in the LM zone.
Correct.
But it just could be some of those parcels, a portion of them, depending on the specific location of the building, may also be eligible.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Other questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Sayok.
Just one more question on existing use. Existing non-conforming use would not be required to obtain a CUP unless the use was modified or expanded. Would, modified or expanded, does that also include if owners should change, if the businesses should sell? Could you just expand and clarify what is, what would fall under modification and expansion?
Modification, expansion could be several things. It could be if they added on to the facility, if they changed the specific use, and yes, it would include changing the operator.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Confused by that. I thought a use permit ran with the land.
Is it, did you want to clarify? It would be if, there's different types of licenses and they have to go through a regulatory process. And so when those licenses change for the operator, then that would trigger the town review of that. And I don't know if the...
So when the Town Council adopted the regulatory permit for firearms sales in the, not in the zoning code, but how they're going to permit and regulate uses, they addressed that issue about when those permit and when those applications have to come back, back before Town Council for further hearings. And one of the trigger is a change in ownership of the business. So that, that has nothing to do with the land use. However, as part of the regulatory permit is, it was contemplated that, that would be a change in use that would allow the Town Council then to look at the land use issues.
And that change was made after the use permit was granted to Templar?
There's no use permit that's been granted.
Okay, then the permission or the, whatever permissions were needed from the town?
Okay, so again, this is townwide and just in general, for any use that becomes a non-conforming use, there's a period of time that council will make a determination whether a business remains non-conforming, needs to come into conformance within a certain period of time. And that's not been determined by council yet.
But I'm not asking about that. I'm asking about this change because typically if we were talking about a use permit, then it runs with the land and ownership changes can affect it.
Correct.
Here, since we're not talking about a use permit, I understand you to say that if there were a change in ownership, that would require a reapplication to the town.
If there's a determination that a business is non-conforming and that, and ultimately ordinance is adopted whereby the, a use becomes non-conforming, then again, council will address whether or not triggers that change in use. And the way the ordinance is currently drafted, that wouldn't trigger a CUP if it's non-conforming.
Then I'm confused. It sounds like two answers that are, that are different. Under the present draft of the ordinance, were Templar...
We don't know because, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but again, we don't know that until council makes a determination on...
I'm just trying to clarify two answers I got that I find to be in conflict and I probably, it's because I don't understand it. So that's all I'm trying to do is clarify. The answer I got, or somebody got the first time, my understanding was that if, for example, because we only have one gun shop in town, if Templar were to change its ownership, I understood staff's position, that would require some reapplication with the town. Now, that was the answer I got. I don't know where that comes from, but so I guess I'm just saying, do you two agree on that?
Let me, let me clarify, and I'll read it from the section because I don't think it deals with the ownership as I had mentioned. It's any change in the type...
Excuse me, can you tell us where you're reading from?
I'm on page seven of the staff report, item five.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Item five, section A, section A1 actually. Any change in the type of federal firearms license type, any change in the state of California certificate of eligibility, or any other required state license or permit and change to the validity of the license held by the business granted a conditional use permit.
That's in the proposed ordinance?
Correct.
So, okay, just, because I really want to know, that would mean if it were adopted and if we assume that the only existing use in town would become a non-conforming use, is it your understanding in that language that a change of ownership thus requiring some kind of new certificate from the federal government or the state government, or perhaps both, would be enough to require a reapplication?
Again, we don't regulate how the ATF governs and reviews applications for federal firearms licenses, or the state governs their certificate of eligibility. And that would be a state determination. If someone, if, if they changed ownership and it required a new federal firearms license or a new certificate of eligibility from the state, then it would trigger a change according to our code. If ATF or the state makes a determination that that change does, isn't a change that requires a change in the certificate, then that's not a determination by the town.
So we don't know the answer to that question? That, that is, if, assuming for the moment they have a license from the federal and/or state governments, we don't know the answer to, would someone need a new license or that business sold?
Generally, I'll defer to Captain DeAntonio. Generally, it's our understanding that if it were a new business, will require a new certificate of eligibility and new federal firearms license.
Anytime that a business is sold and the entities of that business are changed, then they are going to have to apply for a new federal firearms license. I think that's the question you're looking to get answered.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Just a point of clarification on that issue. Because we have pending additional state legislation which may require all current fire, stores that sell firearms to apply for or expand or do something with their licensing or permits, if that were to happen, then any, any retail outlet in this town that was currently operating, if I read the ordinance correctly, it says any change or any other required state license or permit. So if the state requires an additional permit or a change because of a law, we could, then this ordinance could take into effect and this business would be required to come back to the council. Is that correct?
Generally, on firearms, for the most part, the federal government and the state of California govern most of the regulations. The state has carved out a few exceptions, being land use, where a local jurisdiction can exercise its own discretion, and they've carved out a small exception with respect to allowing regulatory permits. And that's what this council and many other local agencies have adopted. That is correct, that if state law changes or federal law changes and it is applicable to an existing business, and again, we have no way of knowing how that's going to change since there is at least state legislation still pending. We're obviously tracking that as are many other jurisdictions that are considering these types of regulations. But again, if the state law were to apply to an existing business, then we, our, our ordinances would apply accordingly.
Other questions or at this time of staff from the commission? Okay. Oops. We will now move to the, the public portion of public hearing and invite comments from the members of the public. I would remind the members of the public that we're not considering a specific application tonight, nor are we considering a specific business tonight, nor are we considering whether or not the town of Los Catos should or should not sell firearms. We're, we're considering zoning, changes to the zoning regulations contained in chapter 29 of the town code. And a moment ago, the staff put up on the, on the slide and I'd ask them to do that again, the, the specific kinds of things that we are considering tonight. And it would be most helpful to the Planning Commission if members of the public could focus their comments on the items that are before us tonight. That being said, we will call Gilbert Decker first.
Thank you, sir. My name's Gil Decker, 45 Glen Ridge. Couple of comments in general before I address the topic at hand. I spent four years as Assistant Secretary of the Army for Research Development and Acquisition, and of course, all arms and things came under my purview. The kinds of weapons that we were generating kill massive people in a hurry and they belong in the hands of soldiers in combat. I never have felt, and neither does Mr. Colin Powell, who's a friend of mine, and General McChrystal, they agree with me, these are not designed to go into the hands of the average citizen. And I've been very concerned that in some way, if I understand the proposed ordinance, and it's very complicated, I'm glad Mr. O'Donnell clarified some of that because I sure didn't understand it either. But anyway, the 250-foot zone from sensitive receptors and so forth is a good idea. But I do believe, and I hope it's in the purview of the town, that if, whether it's Templar or anyone else, if there's going to be a gun store here, that it explicitly forbid these massive weapons that have been concerned. I'm not so concerned about a citizen who is responsible, passes the test that ought to be enforced and everything, and is trained. So I do applaud the town for trying to get this ordinance together. I think it's very critical to maintain the character of the town. But, and I know you said I shouldn't talk about Templar, but whether it's Templar or Brand X, they should not be allowed to handle, modify these high-volume weapons. That is bad news and that, to me, does not violate the Second Amendment. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Are there questions for the speaker? Will this?
... Okay.
He raised a very interesting question. Before I could ask you a question, I need some clarification from staff, so if you don't mind, just wait a minute. Is I, there's a lot of things on this I don't understand, but I understand that California is perhaps more restrictive than a number of states when it comes to these modified weapons with large magazines and all that. I've kind of assumed that in California, I won't swear to that. But I've also, I noticed that we're not reporting in this, in this zoning ordinance to deal with that. And I think that's because it's a zoning ordinance. It is not an ordinance which deals with that kind of thing. So I want to clarify that because your, your request is reasonable, if that's something we can deal with. But I've been led to believe we can't, so I would like to get staff's clarification first.
Thank you.
It's outside the purview of a zoning ordinance to regulate what would be sold.
Okay, so we couldn't.
Ma'am, you say if it's done properly and legally, that could be solved?
Couldn't.
It's not, we'll save that question.
Okay, all right.
And see whether there's a commission or who would like to asset of staff after we complete the public portion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Deborah Weinstein.
Hello, Planning Commission, it's Deborah Weinstein from Tate Avenue. So please take a second to imagine that I have 27 people standing next to me, and that's how many people I've received messages from today that wanted to be here, but with back to school and right before a holiday weekend, they support my comments, but they couldn't be here. On page 10 of the staff report, the planning, the staff report considered the options. I noticed that we're probably not going to be discussing that this evening, but I do feel that the Planning Commission should provide input to the council on the matter of the different options. As a community member, I feel the best practices regarding the amortization period would be to encourage a 60-day period. The goal would be to allow the non-conforming business to be located in, into a zone where in fact it makes a better asset to our community. Town staff has consistently maintained that Templar's location was not in the downtown. And I say not in the downtown. I have a letter here from Greg Larson dated from December 7th, the very first communication that was received from town regarding Templar. And in the very first line of that letter, it states, "Retail enterprises are allowed as a matter of legal right under existing zoning at that location, which is not in the central business district, i.e. downtown." Town needs to maintain consistency. Town staff therefore can now not maintain that Templar Armaments is downtown for the purposes of amortization. An amortization period should be the result of town's existing code. At section 29.10.195, which states when a zoning amendment is adopted after 1981 that causes a use to be non-conforming solely by subjecting it to the requirement of obtaining a conditional use permit, all uses affected by that amendment shall apply for a use permit within 60 days after the amendment becomes effective. And just as a reminder, last August 28th, a year ago, the business owners of a retail sporting goods store located at 611 University Avenue submitted an application to the Planning Department for what was described as a minor exterior change. Six days later, September 4th, final approval was granted. It therefore does not seem to be an undue burden to require the business a 60-day period for compliance. We need to keep our amortization period in line with the town code, and as long as our ordinance is based on the town code, the town will not be sued. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Weinstein. Are there questions for the speaker? Thank you. Shannon Susick, I believe that's correct.
I had a question for you in regards to what you're looking at tonight, and that is in regards to the retail sales. I see specifically retail sales. I don't see where internet sales are addressed individually. And I think if any of you have pulled up the, I know that we're not talking about specific business, but in a way we are because the current Templar website, just this evening, advertising complete AR platforms now in stock, will ship nationwide, six different tiers. Bulk ammunition now available. So when we're looking at retail sales in the LM district, it doesn't say anything about internet sales that I could find in the code. It says retail sales. But internet sales, whether it is in the LM district or whether we're talking downtown, which would be Talbots or something like that, does not address items like this. Lower... Lower receivers, which can be put together to create automatic weapons, for example, like the one that shot up Santa Monica City College earlier in the year. I think it's important that that be addressed in your ordinance language. Retail sales is one thing. Mr. Brown walking in to buy a weapon is different than things being shipped across the nation, or being sold in bulk that can harm masses of people. And I think the last thing the town of Los Gatos wants is to have a weapon that is eventually found out to be built and manufactured from parts sold at Templar, because it was not looked at in any manner. Thanks so much.
Any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Jess Guy.
I'm glad you used the word scheme, some of these things tend to be schemes rather than thoughtful planning. Let me back up a little bit to the last speaker who talked about internet sales. Templar is a licensed federal firearms dealer, they can't sell to private parties outside the state of California, they can only sell to licensed firearms dealers in other states. So internet sales are basically an advertisement to ship parts or firearms to other licensed firearms dealers. Doesn't have anything to do with somebody walking in and making guns. That is, to me, not even relevant. I am glad that the commission actually recognizes that the laws relating to firearms and ammunition are somewhat complex. They are complex and confusing. For 30 years, I was an ATF agent, I licensed firearms dealers, I examined firearms dealers, I arrested firearms dealers. I've got a little bit of background in what I talk about. Right now, I'm an attorney for the public defender's office, I'm not here in that respect, but that's my other side of life. The proposal that you have tonight, the ordinance, is, it's not bad. Actually, the idea of zoning is good. The idea of a conditional use permit, I have to admit, is a good idea. I think that the laws allow it, the town can allow it, and it's an appropriate approach to this issue, which has been divisive, and it shouldn't be. It really shouldn't be divisive in the community. Templar, again, we're not talking about one store, are we? But that seems to be the only one in town. They violated no federal, state, or local laws. In fact, they tried to follow all the laws and rules and regulations that the town gave them when they started their business. And by the way, that corporation, that company expended almost a million dollars to set up that business. Requiring them to somehow move within 60 days seems a little bit onerous. There is one issue I have, do you have the map, the zoning map up, please? Pop that back up. I did notice that, in fact, today I took a little walker out, and I measured off all the distances between the ballet school, the dance school, the studio kicks, and everything like that. They're definitely outside the minimum. However, right across the street is the Department of Motor Vehicles. That's a government building, and a government building is included in what you call this zoning area, which I would assume makes Templar nonconforming to the proposed ordinance. I also know that at the DMV, sometimes they have armed guards, you know, people loaded guns walking around. I don't know if that scares other people in the neighborhood or not. We can talk about this for days, and we probably will, but I'll let it go at that.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. Are there questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. We don't have any additional speaker cards, let me make one last check, is there anyone else who would like to address the commission? If not, we'll close the public portion of the public hearing, and I'll turn to the Commissioners for questions of staff, or comments. I guess the Chair would have one question of staff. It would appear to me, in the definitions sections, of the definition section of the proposed ordinance, it does make reference and include internet transactions, that's just a matter of clarification for one of the speakers. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, could you restate where you saw that?
It's on the first page of Exhibit A.
Exhibit A, okay.
It says, in about the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph.
That's correct.
This is a matter of clarification. Commissioner Smith.
I just have a quick question for Captain Dantonio. When a firearms dealer is going to sell on the internet, if it's a box sale, wholesale, whatever, do they need a particular license over and above what they've already acquired?
Honestly, that would be out of my area of expertise. I'm not aware that they would be, they would need anything additional other than their federal firearms license, but having said that, that is really out of my expertise.
Just a reminder that what the Ad-Hoc Committee brought back as a recommendation, neither the council directed staff to look at internet sales, nor did the Ad-Hoc Committee make any recommendations on internet sales.
Well, if I could just, I'll just give the reason for my question, which was, what we are looking at is if there is any change in the current business structure or licensing, then that could trigger the need to come back for permission. And so that's why I was asking that question about internet sales, if it required additional licensing. So, just to clarify why I asked that question.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I have two questions. I guess the first question is, since normally ordinances like this are not born in this town, in other words, any good attorney is going to find out where somebody else has adopted, so they can look at what went before them. I guess I'll direct this question to the town attorney. I assume there are other jurisdictions that have already adopted ordinances like this? That's a question.
When the town council directed staff to research this issue, we brought back information to the council and the Ad-Hoc Subcommittee of other California jurisdictions who had adopted zoning regulations.
Similar to this, is what I'm asking.
Correct, with the concept of zoning and CUPs, correct.
So the other question, I guess, is, if I, and I'll direct this to staff, if I understand correctly, the, what I call the amortization period, the status quo, the time period, 20 years, for example, or 60 days, is something that the town council will decide on, and how it should be applied, and to whom it should be applied? We can offer comments if we wish to, is that correct?
That is correct.
I guess the only thing I want to, well, I'll save that for comments, okay.
Commissioner Talaspor.
So I have two questions as well, and they came up with, in the definitions, and in reference actually to, I guess, my question is to what we heard tonight from one of our speakers. And that's, he brought up the term of, what was it? Anyway, the modified high-volume weapons. So what I wanted to know, and maybe it's to Mr. Dantonio, in the definition, list of definitions, they use destructive devices? Now, can you enlighten us and let us know if something like that would be covered under destructive devices? Or who could answer that?
Thank you. So, to describe that, when the council took up the regulatory permit for the business, the ordinance that was adopted in August had defined terms and definitions, and destructive devices are a particular classification that requires a separate type of federal firearms license, an FFL-10, and federal law defines what a destructive device is, according to what type of license is required.
Okay, but I'm not sure that answers my question.
And I'm not sure that we can answer, I mean, again, we're not the experts as to whether or not
Okay.
High-speed firearms are destructive devices. But it is defined under federal law.
Okay, so that answers my question. So then, the other question I have, that was also brought up tonight, and I guess I have a question about it too. What is the definition of our downtown? Did I miss this, or?
Well, again, there's two different descriptions. There's central business district.
Yes.
And that's the C2 zones.
So can you just tell us the streets to remind us?
It would be basically anything south of Highway 9 would be the central business district.
Right, okay, that's my understanding.
Downtown area is, it encompasses a larger area, I don't have the map in front of me, but it goes out towards Main Street to Los Gatos Boulevard, down to Blossom Hill, down to University Winchester, and it encompasses also the central business district. And the downtown definition is important, because that's what regulates the parking downtown, for the, the parking in the downtown area, not the central business district, is, has a different requirement than anywhere else in town.
Okay, and you are also referring to university?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Seau.
Question again on the amortization of existing uses. I guess, I feel like there's so much information that I wish I had readily available. Again, looking at these three options, understanding that there's pros and cons to each, and understanding that a lot of research has gone into neighboring communities, can you shed some light on what types of amortization they have, so that I get a feel of what other communities who have grappled with this have done, when looking at this nonconforming use?
I don't have anything available to discuss that.
Okay, and one more question, if I may, that's somewhat related to that, and this is a question for the police captain. Are there different regulatory requirements for a commercial retail business to follow versus a retail that one does from one's home?
The federal government has different licenses, the best way I can answer that is, home uses is something would be called an FFL-3, and it would be curios and collectors' licenses. It's not per se a retail license, it gives collectors an opportunity to trade with other licensed FFL-3s.
Okay, so a follow-up to that, going again to this use of the word internet. If someone was conducting a business selling firearms from their home using the internet, again, how would that fall under the draft ordinances we have here? And I understand in your staff report that we have no current home uses, but I'm concerned about when we annex homes that do have these uses, and how much time do we give that homeowner to amortize into all our conforming uses? And so the question whether their regulatory issues are different, that, to me, should shed some light on whether they have different rules than a commercial business, so.
Not sure what the question is.
So is your question more to how would the town regulate, or provide better regulation for home occupation-type uses in the county that are annexed?
I guess it would be a question, and it would be a comment, because one can't just separate internet sales, thinking just retail versus internet, just because retail now, it's one and the same. And so I have some difficulty in just sticking to the word retail without thinking of how internet sales falls into that, whether it's commercial or whether it's a home use. And so I suppose it's a comment, and I was hoping to get some clarification from staff on that.
Yeah, I think that'll take some, in terms of the home oc, and that type of use, I think staff will need to consider that more, and in response, provide that answer to the town council regarding that.
Commissioner Smith.
If I could just have a point of clarification, so I have like three questions. Is there, I just want to go back, there is a special license for sale of high-capacity firearms, am I correct, Captain?
There's several different federal firearms licenses, again, my expertise is not in the federal area of regulating the licensing and the sale of firearms. My presence here is from a public safety standpoint in regards to the town of Los Gatos and the public safety issues that would arise.
All right, thank you. Well, then let me move on, because I believe what my fellow commissioners are talking about is a home-based business versus a brick-and-mortar business. And so my question to Ms. Bailey is, the options that are set forth on page 10, are we being asked to comment on the time that we recommend to the council for compliance with, or application when a nonconforming use is found? Is that what we're asking to do, 60 days, 10 years, 20 years, 14 years?
Yeah, if you have a particular comment on this, yes. Or if you feel the matter is truly a policy-only issue, you can defer it to council. But if you have an opinion, as a consensus or as individuals, it will all be forwarded to the town council.
Well, then I will make my comment, and my comment is that what I, what I think about is the difference, perhaps there is a difference in the need, when we find a nonconforming use of a home-based business, and we require them to do XYZ, versus we find a nonconforming use with a brick-and-mortar business, and we're saying within 60 days, you conform or you lose the right to do business in our town, I do think that that is a big, there's a big difference in investment for the business owner, et cetera, or there could be a big difference in investment between a brick-and-mortar business and a home-based business. So I'll just make that comment for the record.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
The amortization question, which we've all been discussing, I'm going to direct this to the town attorney, because I went to law school, certainly in the last century, and a long time ago, but even then, we were talking about amortization in zoning, and amortization had to be reasonable. So if, for example, somebody spent a million dollars on a store, 60 days would be an invitation to a lawsuit, but she would probably lose. On the other hand, if you had a home use, where you basically spent nothing, your amortization period might be very short. Now, I don't, I guess, what I like about is, we don't have to reach this decision, but we can watch and see what the town council does with it. But I think if the town attorney has any views that she would like to share with us on amortization, and I don't, if you don't want to, or you think it's not a good idea, that's fine, but that's what three of us are stumbling over. I'm not stumbling so much, because it's not my worry. But I will tell you that 50 years of experience says amortization has to be reasonable. And if I spend a million dollars on a retail business fully licensed, and you give me 60 days to get out of business, I'd probably retire on the lawsuit. So if you have an opinion on amortization, or the, something about the background, so we could all know what it is, I'd appreciate it.
For the purpose of tonight's hearing, since this is a land use matter, for the Planning Commission to consider, and not a policy decision as to litigation risks, we would ask you to focus on the options before you, and consider those. Commissioner O'Donnell is correct that when courts look at amortization, they look at what's considered reasonable, and there is no definition, and there's no easy definition or way to define what reasonable is, but is a case-by-case basis.
Commissioner Birch.
I'd like to revisit the zoning, the areas that you had up there. I'd like to know what the town procedure would be if someone came in and filed for a business permit within the 200. the 250 feet, but they were actually doing a business that we considered one of the special uses. If somebody wanted to open a dance class, or a child's art studio or something, and they fell within the 250 feet of an existing business in one of those, what would the procedure with the town be with their application?
That would be something that the deciding body would evaluate in their review, but they would be permitted to be approved in that area.
So if they were approved, though, and for any reason, any of the firearms businesses had to, anything came up, they had to come back in for their permit, that business now that has moved in within their 250 feet, wouldn't that change the status of that parcel?
The way the ordinance is drafted, it talks about uses that are existing at the time that the ordinance is adopted. So anything that came in after the ordinance is adopted would not be considered in that part of the evaluation.
Oh, okay, okay. I have one other question. There was a statement in here about that we would be establishing grounds for suspension, or revoking an existing permit, but it didn't really say what those grounds would be, and would that be based on the annual review that we'd be doing? Would that be based on complaints, and what would the grounds be?
Revocation and modifications are already established in the town code, so it would be subject to those requirements. So people could come to public hearings and voice their concerns, and if the commissioner or council felt there was a need to reopen the matter for consideration of whether or not a use should be revoked or modified, that would be the process.
So there's nothing special being added based on this use?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
In listening to your answer, which I happen to think was correct, it did trigger this, however, and that is, the reason this ordinance puts in things like schools and government buildings and all that stuff, is because there's a policy reason behind it. Now, these are the same, fairly close to what we have when we sell liquor, which is odd, since liquor and guns often go together, but they're not the same. And if we're worried about policy, and if we're worried about children, and we're saying, but that's okay, because it's really a date certain, and now you can bring in the kids, and they're selling guns over there, that's okay. So that doesn't make a lot of sense. One would think that if you allow a gun dealer here, and somebody wants to put a kindergarten here, not a state kindergarten, because we don't have any control over that, but anything which would require our permission, one of the things we ought to be able to consider is whether they ought to go there, if we believe that the location of a gun seller is somehow risky for these other uses. So I'd just throw that out. I know it's not before us, but if we're so concerned, we are, about the sale of guns around these uses, but we allow the uses to come in subsequently, no problem, somebody ought to think about that.
Again, that would be for the deciding body. That would be part of the evaluation of that application process.
So just to clarify that, if there is an existing business in a dance studio, a youth activity makes an application for a conditional use permit, the planning commission, and ultimately the council can make that determination, and will evaluate whether or not that's appropriate location for that business.
But if it's properly zoned, and you don't need a use permit, that use can come in without a use permit, and there's nothing the town can do, right? So your example only applies where the new use requires a use permit, not because the zoning permits it. I'm not, this is not a question and answer period. I'm just throwing it out because this comment that our august town council can deal with.
Most youth-oriented facilities, though, would require use permit, because a dance studio does, karate studios, a school, those all require use permit.
Other questions, comments, observations? Commissioner Bujor.
The flip side of that is, what if Los Gatos Ballet, the dance company, and Studio Kicks go out of business in the next month? Does that then free up that whole zone for use, or is it locked in stone as it is today?
That use is allowed, another use is allowed to go in for one year. So if another use does not go in, a different use, or it's vacant, it would still be considered a youth-oriented facility until another use goes in there that is not a youth facility. Then that use permit is not valid anymore.
But if that happened, would that change this map, or would this map stay the same as it is, as we're approving it?
Oh, it would change.
Okay.
Good question.
Other questions or comments?
I just wondered if you would change the slide to put back up the points that we're reviewing.
Thank you. It seems a lot of our conversation and discussion has been over things that we really are not obligated to comment on. So I'm going to make a motion excluding anything on the existing uses, and then perhaps if people want to make comments on the existing uses on their own after the motion, they can do so. But I think the ad hoc committee did a commendable job. I looked at this from all different angles, and it seems a pretty good and reasonable approach. I think all of these things that are under our consideration as they were submitted to us in our staff report, I don't, I haven't heard anything from my fellow commissioners that would warrant changing any of this. So I am going to make the required findings that the town code amendments are consistent with the general plan, and therefore make a motion to forward a recommendation to town council for adoption of the amendments to the zoning regulation ordinance as outlined in Exhibit 3.
We have a motion in front of the commission by Commissioner Bujor that will record a second by the chair. Are there other comments by the commissioners? Commissioner Talzwar.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second that.
I already seconded.
Did you? I'm sorry. Well, there you go. I wasn't listening. But I would, yes, I would recommend that this go on. I think one of the things, I think that the ad hoc committee did a very good job in covering all the points, and one of the things that I especially liked was that this is not a separate, single, specific ordinance dealing with only one type of retail business, but it's a series of amendments that go into what we already have as our existing land use, and it embeds that, the zoning and the CUP process of firearm sales into the existing code. So that part I really appreciated. As far as amateurization, you know, what I'm concerned most about that with this is any firearm, any firearm store, wherever it should be, if it comes, I mean, whatever, that the, the period, 60 days is too little, 20 years is too much, in my case, and only because I consider the regulatory materials that are used in this retail business, such as this, as a safety issue for the public. And so for that, just for the council, if they want an opinion, I would hope that they would consider something more than 60 and much less than 20.
We have a motion in front of us by Commissioner Bujor, seconded by the chair, that was making the required findings and a positive recommendation for adoption of the amendments as presented. Are there further comments? Commissioner Sayak.
I do want to make some comments. I do believe that the ad hoc committee did a great job. It's a very complicated, controversial subject, and I found that the language and the verbiage in front of us, that they put significant thought and effort into it, and for that reason, I like the language. My concern, though, in forwarding a recommendation for myself, is in Exhibit 4, we've identified three sites within town that would be permitted to, these sites would be eligible for CUPs, for retail firearm sales, and my concern is just the notification process in going forward, that those sites were not notified, and the surrounding areas with, from those sites, our usual notification, those areas were not notified that that would be a potential use. And there may be things that we aren't even aware of that should be considered when identifying these three sites. So for that reason, I would not support the overall recommendation. I also want to make the comments, when town council does look at this, that they look at a difference in amortization between a commercial use versus a residential use, the permitted, the prohibited use of whether or not firearm sales can be done from one's home. I think that there should be a distinction between those two, and so those timeframes should be different. I also want to make the point that, because it is rather confusing, that we should have some consistency in the language moving forward. And it sounds like there's some language that says Templar Sports is not within downtown, but officially in the definition it is. And so I'd like to have that clarified in the future, so that when this goes forward to town council, it's pretty clear what boundaries this is falling into, so that when we look at the options in front of it, it's clear which ones are being chosen from. So those are my comments.
Commissioner Bujor.
I maybe didn't make myself clear. I was hoping that we would act on this motion, and then provide comments collectively on the existing uses and the amortization. So I'd like to at least get past this one hurdle, perhaps. But I would like to amend my motion based on Commissioner Seck's comments, in that, you know, as part of the recommendation to council, I think we should also recommend to them more targeted noticing to the adjacent areas. I think that is absolutely critical, especially given what we experienced with the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone. So I would like to add that to my motion.
That's an acceptable amendment, the second, or... Other comments on the motion in front of us? And the chair was intending to, after we dealt with this motion, to then provide an opportunity to comment on existing uses. That's okay. Are there further, any further comments? Everyone clear? Commissioner Smith.
I just want to make a comment again, that, and I just want to reinforce comments by fellow commissioners, that there, when the council is considering the timing, the 60 days versus 20 years, I do believe that there, there should be recognition given to the difference of an investment in a home-based business versus a brick-and-mortar business. And I just want to reinforce that in our comments to the council. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'm going to support the motion, but I would like to simply say, there are more questions here than there are answers, and I don't blame the drafters. There's a lot of knowledge that we just don't have. No one has it in the staff, and I don't blame them. So if one wants to pull us apart, you can do it. Nonetheless, our council will, I'm sure, consider it and do whatever they want to. So I would be glad to send it up. And so I'm going to support the motion.
Other comments? Now, the chair will call the question. Is everyone clear on what the motion is and as amended? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Nay. So we have 6-1 vote with Commissioner Sayak voting against the motion. So I would now invite members of the commission to make any additional comments that have not already been made, or to reiterate any comments that they've made earlier about existing uses. Commissioner Bujor.
Thank you. I think I've heard from several other commissioners that I agree with on this, on this issue. When I look at the options before us for compliance by existing firearms dealers, for a brick-and-mortar business, considering there's only three other parcels in town that could possibly allow them to be in compliance, I don't think 60 days is reasonable. I also don't think in perpetuity is reasonable. So I think we're looking at Option 2, and then that just comes down to the number of years. And so I'm hoping that, I've heard from a couple commissioners that seem to agree with that. The number of years, you know, that's, I'm not going to comment on that. But I do think that middle ground, we need to find some reasonable amount of time for them to come into compliance, and I don't think that's 60 days. And I do think there should be a difference between a brick-and-mortar business and a home business. I think 60 days perhaps might be reasonable for a home business. So those are my thoughts on the options for existing uses.
Commissioner Birch.
I want to know if I understand this correctly. I was looking at item number two as this could be done as a case-by-case basis, depending on the business, the investment they had put into it, what was available, were, you know, two of the other sites already taken, and it was going to be a more difficult move to come into compliance? Or do we actually have to set, or will the council be setting a specific timeframe with that?
Council would be setting the timeframe.
And it would be for any and all businesses, then, the existing businesses that came in front of them. It would not be on any case-by-case basis.
In case-by-case, can you want to define that a little more?
Well, if at some point, there was more than one firearm dealer that fell under this, perhaps one was a home-based business, one was an existing, would they both have to, both businesses meet whatever council states, or could it be?
Well, it could be either, but right now, there's a separate category for the commercial retail establishments and the home oc with a blank for the timing.
Oh, okay.
Other comments that other members of the commission would like to make, or to reiterate at this time about existing uses? If not, we will ask the staff to record the comments and share it with, in their report going forward to the town council. So we'll move to commission matters. We have a report from Director Bailey.
Well, I can speak on the council meeting. At the last council meeting, the council approved the wine retail establishment. I think that was at 16212 Los Gatos Boulevard. And they also commended the planning commission on their thorough evaluation of that application. And they did, they just reinforced some of the conditions, just made them a little more stronger.
Any other commission matters from other members of the commission? If not, we're adjourned.